The next time, get an update from our.
Yeah.
Case, be nice. I mean, sense of stuff at last minute, but so.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Yeah, it'd be nice if he. Cause they're okay. Try for six thirty? Next week?
Six thirty?
Whatever.
The next meeting, six thirty?
Sixteen.
If we get.
Can we do it next week?
No, we're meeting next week.
It might be good to do it ahead of March first.
What? They're not gonna need a March killer, right?
We'll meet March second.
March second.
And then March sixteen.
So we could get him on the next meeting, we'll try for six thirty. If not him, someone else will.
There are some requirements for things on March first.
I don't think we can do anything until he's pres- didn't he say he was gonna contact us after?
Yeah, there's nothing, there's no drop dead day of March first.
No, I haven't seen it. I only have what you people have.
Remember.
I thought I saw March first.
I.
No, I didn't see that. I just saw the info gathered, but anyway. Will we read it if it does change?
This is for Janet.
Okay.
Okay, we'll kind of leave it like that.
Yeah.
All right. All right, with the hour being after seven oh five. We have a continued public hearing. And Northwoods, Delaney in Dover. And who's the applicant or his rep here?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Rob Truak, Geodeal Engineering.
Oh, the other rep tonight?
Man.
Ooh, JV team. Okay, now, last time, Rob. I see we've got something from, well, Fire Deputy Fire Chief. I know Paul likes to be called the Fire Chief, but whatever. That we got that letter that said on the eighth, he said that the. He gave him the swept path for this five twenty-seven CMR. And acceptable. He wants to see the hydrant over drive cover stack to be located further. West. And they will spot the hydrant for you.
Correct.
Right? And.
I'm gonna have him show me where it is before I submit the final plan.
Okay. Probably best before endorsement, that way there's no questions for anybody. And he wants a hydrant on A near the entrance.
Correct.
So that would be before endorsement. So he's all happy. And landscape and overall is the typical. Fire department has said, so. Anybody have any questions? All right, moving on. From the Wapo Police Department. Oh, I need your license plate because I told. I thought you were very mad.
I went strong three times. You know where I live.
We all do.
I know.
All right, from February third, we got a Northwoods from Officer Paulon. And the police department has reviewed the updated plans after speaking with the engineer. No longer concerned for this field study, two hundred fifty foot sight line is being safe and adequate. We won't have any other safety concerns. So. Got one from the police. Two, so. And we got closed out, I think, from outstanding plenty departments.
Correct.
All right. Another thing from Kyle, case?
Um.
Beyond what he's already said.
It is all set.
So on his last letter, he had the request to do the work on Sunny Rock. What is it called, Sunny Rock?
Yeah.
So the applicant's in agreement to do the work as described in his letter. I believe the work was capped at twenty-two thousand dollars. If you just put that in as a condition, he's acceptable to do that.
So we.
I'm sorry?
There's some from Kyle.
You don't have up there?
No, you gave me a bunch of police and fire stuff.
I don't think he wrote you any back.
I don't think he did either. I think I just have.
Well, we still need some of the other stuff that we talked about the last night.
Yes, I do have that letter.
I have Bob to do the.
Is that February second?
February second.
Those two things, he said. Fire cottons, so many plans before lot, he's gonna create slot one hour on two and lots A and B. What's up with that? He says, he suggests be addressed.
Who, did we get address those on the file?
Oh, he just wants to rename them.
Okay.
All right, now that's right. Uh, the next one is about the non-conforming in the sewer. That was gonna be on the file, too.
Correct.
And they already just three. Yeah. Wait a minute. Warwick World is accepted public way.
I'm sorry?
This is Warwick.
Warwick.
You're awesome. You just agreed to walk to everything he's on Warwick, too.
The sound is the same.
I kind of think that's good.
You know, I'm looking at that same letter.
That is funny.
It does say, yeah.
Do we have one for this one?
I don't.
Last one I see is January eleventh.
There's nothing in the folder, though?
I will look back.
You wanna look at mine?
Darren, not the latest.
I was looking for something. Something that, um, February.
February eleven?
January eleventh.
Okay.
Oh, here's the special conditions down at the bottom.
Yeah, but I don't remember. Regiment conditions, roof recharge? We never discussed that. My needs flawed.
What's the date of the, sorry?
Sure, that's the latest one?
January eleventh.
Regardless, we don't do anything with roofs or recharge or anything of that. We, uh, just the road guys.
Is that, is that called a conservation letter?
It is because he did that. Yes, he did that. He wrote.
It's in the conservation.
Yeah, he gave it to conservation and then he gave it, I think, to us also.
Getting that.
Get closer.
Oh, this is all conservation.
Yep. Here's, here's another one, Jack, January eleventh. This one talks about the Sunny Rock.
Yeah, you got.
You have.
All right.
I thought it was the same.
Why they do that?
Yeah, this one looks familiar.
Third time.
In order to relieve chronic icing.
That's the one.
They wanted up to twenty-five and.
Does he have twenty-five in there? John thought it was twenty-two, but okay.
She, John didn't think it was twenty-seven? No, John thought it was twenty-two, once at twenty-five, okay.
He's fine with that.
Funny how that always seems to work.
Does Jack have this one?
Yeah, this is one. Compare conveying needs and documents for over parcel A.
This one, that's what he's got.
Right.
It's about Sunny Rock or, uh, this is the one about conservation?
Yes, yes, yeah, that's what he has.
And. Here we do a town edic. Uh, conveyance of this private sewer easement over lot three. That's all before.
Yep.
Endorse. Bear, record utility.
We wait, we convey that before endorsed? No. Oh, the private sewer easement.
Prior to release of the covenant, yeah.
Yeah.
Prior to lease of the covenant.
There's a private sewer easement that goes to one of the home owners on lot three.
Yep. And record a public utility access easement over right of way. Uh, between four eighty-eight and five oh four, convey the town for its future extension prior to release of covenant.
Off of five, yeah.
Okay. Uh, perform off-site road repairs as noted on sheet nine. I think that was what Kyle had. So. What should be in, there's a. The conditions will be that the. Prior to release of covenant would be the twenty-five grand, okay?
Yep.
Given the easement documents.
Well, he's gonna, he's gonna do the work up to twenty-five grand. He's not gonna give twenty-five grand.
Okay, up to.
Yeah, he's not giving the twenty-five grand. He's gonna do the work.
Well, then we add the bond then, if we don't know when you do.
Yeah, that's fine. Combine that.
Okay. Uh. Then. You're gonna prepare the side private sewer easement prior to covenant. That's a condition. The right of way is another one prior to covenant.
What's the right of way one again?
Uh, between four eighty-eight and five oh four for road A.
Off of High Street.
Oh, so the private one.
That says you record a public utility access easement over right of way. That's a substantial portion for road A between four eighty-eight and five oh four. This will be conveyed to the town for future extension of High Street as well as maintenance group, water lines from Dover Drive.
So you do that, you wouldn't do that when you do acceptance of the road?
Well, we'll, we'll need that all done before the release.
Before you, before you release the lots?
Before, yeah, before release of covenant, yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I guess. So that's just over the roadway on that portion, not all the easements all the way through?
Now, this one was, I think, what they want to do is connect to the back plus that water line.
Right.
And. We're only prepared to go off-site. So those should be all part of special conditions prior to release. And do you have loaded, have we loaded the waiver?
We did all except for waiver number seven. You put it on hold.
What was that?
Because of the police.
Right.
Oh, the police?
Right.
Okay. Make a motion.
He's agreed to hold it.
Grant that waiver with the police. Second, with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, that's all the back stuff, so. I'll start with. Anyone on the board, John? Sarah?
All set.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, all set, yeah. I'm all set.
Anyone in the audience care about this?
Nope.
So, all right. With all that being said, though, make a motion to approve. With all the special conditions and waivers.
Second.
With a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? All right. Done.
All right, thank you.
You all done with us tonight?
Aye.
What's the? You don't show, you give a show.
Can you have this, right?
I'm gonna take it and I'm gonna give it back to you because I don't.
No, really, you can't much take it.
Oh, is that the one you gave me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
The hour being after seven ten, we have a continued public hearing for two, twenty-two fifty Route One site plan. And at seven eleven, after seven eleven, a special permit hearing for the same, twenty-two fifty. That being said. Phil. All right, we got some new stuff here that I'm reading while you guys are setting up. You want me to wait so you can hear?
We're all set.
All right. From the local police, Luke Paulon, officer. Police department does not have any public safety concerns in relation to traffic. Fire department. Uh, dated February thirteenth, the swept path analysis indicates this is accessible. Landscape and needs have been noted on the plans. You're gonna have to have, uh. Connection to the fire sprinkler system, which will cover the building. Master key system, none of, but Phil, push it. Same thing with the key lock. And he also said he would combine with the. State building codes and their code five twenty-seven CMR one. So basically, what the chief has said is he's all set with the swept and everything else has to be done in accordance with. Either his laws or the mass on the building code. Any?
We have no issue with any of that. Um, I would make mention of the block block, who's actually already on the plans. I think he just missed it then, so yes, we will do all of those things.
They actually, the fire department connection to the plans also, but that was all on the first step that we gave.
I'll send him a scathing email tomorrow.
I don't think it would.
Turning back, you said you missed?
Oh, I'm sure I'll hear about it.
Okay, uh. Now, this is from John Glosser, just, this is way back about he's dropped off a plan. Fire chief, uh. Once again, John. Saying he dropped off plans and let's see, what else do we have? Kyle Balduff, we have the sixteenth, which we already covered. Now he has this updated at February fourteenth. And rather than going into the front, where I always talk about the size of the plans and. All that is getting to his. Oh. Hey, this is different. All planned revisions and requests in my original review have been satisfied. The other piece that I just discussed by the board have also been addressed. There's no objection, so.
I can't do any better than that.
I know, he's, he went to lawyer school, tells us what's it about, and then just says, I'm all set. Because when you see three pages, I think, uh-oh, we'll be reading this all night, so. But I'll sit there. Moving on to the next one. That was Kyle's. That is all I have from. Everybody who needed to respond. So you, I don't think there's anything you could address there, Phil, because there's nothing to address.
Not really.
So, if you want to continue the presentation?
Um.
All set.
I, I think we're actually pretty set unless you have questions.
Was there a few things that had these? I don't remember this one. I write this one down. Do we have anything that we needed before?
Um, I have a couple of questions.
Okay. Start with Sarah, please, then.
Okay. One is, um, super easy, but on the, the cover. Where it notes the plans are filed under section thirteen. And it says, and section five in parentheses, use regulations. Could you just be more clear and say like, um, you know, it's special permit with the zoning board?
Sure.
Or some, it makes it look like it's a, like a use variance or something. It's.
Got it. Not a problem.
That's super easy.
Say section thirteen site plan, section five special permit for veterinary hospital.
Okay, great.
That's what it was.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I figured, but, um.
Yep.
I was just hoping for something clear. Um.
Steve, does anyone have a plan?
No, we're all set. I just wanted you to see.
No, not you. What Sarah said, where did you?
Oh, that's on the cover sheet.
Okay, first of all.
Um, and then I had asked last time about the signs. Um, to make it clear when you're entering and I, I saw you. Put that on.
Yep.
But I just was a little bit unclear with the signs. So can you tell me the, the front of the building that's, um, that's facing Route One? Is that the urgent care and the back is kind of the main entrance?
Yes.
Yes, this is the urgent care. So the sign, the arrow is coming to point you that way.
Uh-huh. Okay. Um, what sheet, what sheet number is that?
This is on, uh, sheet two.
Sheet two?
Three.
Three. Okay. Okay, yeah, so. So the first, um, the first sign that you approach as you go on Fox Hill Drive, it tells you urgent care to the right.
Yeah.
And main entrance straight. But you're telling me main entrance is left. And then the second one just tells me main entrance to the right. But I think maybe you want to say main entrance straight. And maybe, can you add urgent care to the right?
Yeah, we could add that, that's.
It just, it, I appreciate, you know, adding the signs. I think it will be helpful, but. I, I think that's not really conveying what you want to convey, if I understand it right.
Yeah, it's kind of hard when you're looking at it this way. You think it's going here, but the sign is gonna be facing this way, so it's gonna be pointing into the site.
Okay.
You gotta queue.
Can you, can you have, um, both of them on both signs? So like, if somebody enters here, they know where to go for urgent care?
That's not a problem.
Yeah, okay. And then that's all, that's all I really have. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry, Phil.
That's right. I just have really very, two very small things. I never did see the dimensions on the, the new building like on, on. Chart three, you know, you know, the, the, the actual dimensions of the building. Unless I'm missing it here. On sheet three.
Okay, uh.
Or on another sheet.
Yeah, the actual dimensions weren't actually on those sheets and so. We're just waiting for the final, like, check to.
Yeah, just a little thing.
Yeah.
And then, and we're other small thing, but, but just, we, we did get the, um. The proposed new building, the construction management narrative.
Yeah.
It just note that it often refers to city of Wapo or Wapo ordinances, so that. Just need to make sure the language is town of Wapo and Wapo bylaws are appropriately. And that's all.
Uh, anybody else? Audience?
Both entrances are Fox Hill, uh, in and out, is that correct?
Yes. Are we all set?
Aye.
John said, okay. All right, anybody in the audience, questions, comments? Want to?
You're all with me.
Probably your posse.
How could I tell? All right, so that being none, um. All right, first off. We'll do the special conditions for the site plan because it's not a special permit. And the first special condition is we're gonna add on to the cover sheet. The two items that Sarah has requested, that wants the site, you have site plan, and the other one being the special permit. So they just see it all on the cover sheet.
Site plan is there, just, just the language of, of special permit for the, for the.
All right, and add the special permit language.
Yep.
And this last one is adding signs for urgent care, as she's requested.
Yes.
Or add to.
Yes.
Endorsement. And also it's special condition, so I'll make a motion to approve the site plan.
Second.
With a second. Discussion? No, if you're not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, okay, and now special permit. We do not have any special conditions there because it asks for any and we don't. So I'll make a motion to approve this, uh, special permit.
Can I just, sorry, can I just ask one question?
Phil.
At, at the last hearing, they were gonna look and see if they could reduce any of the parking. I'm, I'm guessing you, you looked and.
Stuck with what we are, especially once we get the fire attorney or ADI and.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
We did what we could, but it wasn't sadly terribly much.
Okay, all right, okay, just wanted to check.
Make a motion to approve the special permit. With a second?
Second.
With a second, Phil. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Lido. Five zero, five zero, five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Jack, can I have that back, please?
And we've got something from Bristol, right?
Yep. Thank you.
All right, the hour being after seven fifteen, we have a continued public hearing for personal industrial subdivision. And if they decide to do, rather than have this go in advance of the proposed AQV special permit coming up. They've requested that we continue this without testimony. And they've given us an extension up to April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, so make a motion to grant that.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And this will be continued at March second. And what time, they are, we'll put them on the board.
They gotta go at seven ten.
So this will go seven ten?
Mm-hmm.
And they're at seven eleven for the.
Seven ten, seven eleven, and seven twelve.
Oh, they just request, okay. This public hearing will be continued at seven ten on March second. And. Go to the way, uh, so we're all set there. Uh. Next one, we're gonna open up the hearing for, for Bruin Court. You here for that, Phil?
His year's out in the hallway. He'll be, excuse me, I'll park him. He'll be here in seconds, but.
I'll be here in a minute, still.
I am here for this, too.
Awesome. I was about to ask you. Five other day. We're all done, down, back.
It will be next month. I've been saying that for five years, but.
Take the other folder for this. All right. Okay, with the hour being after seven. Yeah, I'm sorry. This is, with, the hour being after seven twenty. And this is continuing with our testimony Thursday, January fifteenth. We have a request from Michael Freiberger. You have to submit a definitive plan to Bruin Court, nine sixty-five West Street, John, Russell thirty-eight dash fifty-seven, zoning district RA and rural. Paid by Henderson Consulting. And deed of property is book thirty-six five oh five, H one six six. And it's located at nine sixty-five Washington. And we're having a hearing. The court's of national law is forty-one, eighty-one T is amended. So with that being said, we are open and we're just about at the seven. Thirty, so why don't I just do the clock tower?
No, it's seven twenty.
No, no, we got a clock tower in case anybody walks in.
Oh, I see.
Just kill it so it don't sit around for.
Okay.
Okay, we're interrupting this meeting just for a second because we had one for seven thirty. We used to have a clock tower, but we have a request from the applicant that we take no testimony at February sixteenth. And he's given us an extension up through April thirtieth, so I'll make a motion to allow the extension up through April thirtieth.
Second.
With a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and we'll put it on April sixth. Do we have a time?
You want my, I'm sorry, April.
Not me.
Um, there's nothing on April sixth, so do you want to go with April twentieth or do you want?
Yeah, we have nothing, yeah.
Okay, so can do April twentieth at seven ten?
Okay, that's, okay, it, we'll continue this to April twentieth at seven ten PM. So with that being said, that we'll, next time we'll take up the clock tower.
Okay.
So. Back to Bruin. And speaking for the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Phil Mackey, 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 Phil, this is Washington, Green, Northern Chief. As counsel for on the app, the applicant, Mike Freiberger, who's in the room. Um, hopefully attending shortly will be Scott Henderson, the engineer. Um, but most of this, uh, I think presentation is really background and refreshing memories. You may or may not remember, it was a couple of years ago now that we came forward with a preliminary plan. From your board. Coupled with an A and R. And at the time. We created lot one, which is not part of the subdivision, therefore not on this plan, and we created parcel A. And you would ask what was going to happen with parcel A because it couldn't be separated legally. And we told you we're gonna come forward with subdivision. So we are here with that subdivision. Basically, still have, um, the same exact plan. The same exact house. It's one of Mr. Freiberger lives in now. Uh, what we are proposing is to create a paper road. We have in the plan set that we submitted. Uh, included a sheet that shows that we can build a conforming, completely non-waivered subdivision. Um, if the board, uh, was not so inclined to grant the waivers per your, um. Standard of practice. Uh, we don't want to do that, but we can, and, uh, we actually overachieved, which is one of the reasons we continued because it got confusing. We submitted an entire set of plans for that. Um, which we're happy to discuss, but I don't really think, uh. It moves the, the discussion forward any, but we do have those if you ever want to. So basically, what we're proposing. So basically what we're proposing is hopefully a very heavily waivered street that is shown here in brown. And it has two lots. Back to, uh, the Cesario section. Subdivision has to have two lots. They both have to have frontage, they both have their area. Those particular case, they're both buildable lots. Whether or not anything actually gets built here on the blue one is questionable because it's wet. We're not gonna argue that, that that's, uh, really a discussion for Concom and, um, that route if, if and when we ever get there. Uh, but as far as meeting the requirements of this board, I've got two roads, I've got two lots. They both have adequate frontage. They're different colors because there are actually different zones. They both, let me rephrase that. This zone here, I believe is RA. I might have to factor, I'm not sure it's RA. It has suitable frontage, circle, and is a fully compliant RA lot. This is rural. This has, again, suitable frontage, circle, and has a fully compliant rural lot. So as far as that goes, we do have the two lots. I think what most of the discussion will be hopefully is how much actually needs to get built. If the board was so inclined, um, and maybe we would, uh, figure out how to phrase this or potentially rework, uh, the covenant. Mike would prefer not to do anything. This is a situation similar, but it actually was achieved legally. As, uh, happened in the, the Dodekian matter of about ten years ago. Where at that point, we had a house at the end of a driveway, and we were just trying to make it legal. In this case, we had a house at the end of the driveway, and we would like to separate it out. We haven't done that, so currently it is still completely legal. But at the end of the day, we would like to be sitting on a legal residential lot, not combined in with, uh, what's actually commercial use over here, agricultural. Let me rephrase that. It's not, it's the right type of non-residential use. And I believe, and you know, clearly, uh, this would be subject to fires and comments because public safety trumps pretty much everything. But, um, but what we would like to see is it be left alone in the current driveway. Because it services the house adequately. I believe that's what the comment letter says. It possibly, of course, would be what the fire department wants for improvements. But I'm sure there would be additional improvements for this to ever get built. And so we propose, um, I don't wanna say phasing because that's not the right, uh, actual term. I don't think there really is a term for what we're asking. But until such time, it's never gonna get developed. We'd like the driveway to stay the way it is. Subject, of course, to fire safety and hearing your comments. And then if this was ever actually separated out as a buildable lot, then we'd take the improvements as possible. Clearly, it's a discussion, and I don't expect it to come to conclusion tonight. But that's like, like, an ultimate goal, um, to make it as stand as possible.
Question, a comment, regarding?
Sure.
I think what you're trying to do, it appears right now you can't do anything with the blue lot. Right? Meaning, you can't put a house in. The, um, it's like, it's, it's, right?
At this moment?
Yeah. And I know you, till you explore it, just from a legal standpoint, that you go through all approvals and everything else and make you do what you're supposed to do and just, just don't come back for the covenant until you're ready.
Yep.
Back to the same. Kind of puts it on hold, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you don't see the covenant, doesn't it, well, think about it. You have to record it though or not?
I think you should, probably should record the covenant, but we could add a paragraph in there explaining what we're doing.
But if you never go to build it.
Then you never release it.
You never release it so it stays in its entity like that.
Right. I think that would effectively do what we're asking.
Okay, go ahead, Kay.
So what would make it, so it's not buildable, you can't use it right now, what would change that?
Creative engineer. Uh, I mean, it's, it's, if this was a flat piece of land and dry, it's a hundred percent buildable. Neither of those are true. Uh, so there's a decent amount of wetland over here, there's a decent amount here, and the wetland goes right between. So, Board of Health would have to get on board because this is absolutely unseptic. So, where that goes becomes an issue. Conservation would clearly have to get on board because it's all in the buffer. So, at some point, maybe a technology or something is developed that makes this work. Um, I used the lot right next to my house as an example. My grandfather didn't buy it because it was never gonna be built in a thousand years. Um, I have a neighbor, she's a lovely lady and I'm very happy to have her, but fifteen feet from my property line because things changed. And it might not even be the technology, it might simply be the price.
So it's not something in the foreseeable future?
It is not.
Wanna read the comments, because one of them is gonna kinda come down to that one. First one is from Chief Bailey. Three names, Bruins Way, Diana's Way, and Pile Court. You pulled all of them? So, whatever, you pick one. Pile Court. It's not a, not a winner. Towel's a long one, and. I don't know. Say that one for last. And let's see. Fire department, if lot one's developed, we find the proposed roadway twenty feet acceptable. And ride pocket, you can't park on the roadway. If lot one is developed, we can proceed to cul-de-sac. But if lot one's not developed, changes the access, just the access are not required. So basically saying you'll do anything, you don't do anything, right?
No.
Right?
Defrecation, which is the option.
Lot one is here. That's the one that we expect is not going to be available.
Okay, uh, police department. Towel on, he has the new safety concerns on this. And I'll read Towel's, that's on the Board of Health. That's probably back in yours. Have you guys received from Towel's comments made two days ago?
Yes.
Okay. Private way covenant will need to be prepared with you at the time of plan endorsement. Mutual maintenance ground will need to be prepared. Our waivers requested, he also said he should also go for section four, two dash C, dead end street. Be constructed with all the cul-de-sac. And section five dash six B, roadway cross section. Be constructed as shown. And he wants to correct the sheet numbering from one of ten to two of ten, et cetera. Sheet four of nine, revise second plan reference to the eight ninety-eight, not nineteen seventy-seven. Do complete plan reference seven twenty-eight of nineteen eighty-three. If you go to Bruin Court, he wants to list the area of the road and note that's gonna be private. And he wanted to add a note to the sheet above the stamps and files proposal. We will remain a private way and facility and not as a private town, the standard things. Between the town Wapo and Michael Freiberger, whatever, the standard. Note two on the sheet. Lots one and two are shown a plan with subject to benefit of mutual maintenance. Next one on sheet four nine. Provide grade easement around the wall area where grade extends outside the lane away. Sheet five, label the rim and invert of all structures and flare them, both the plan and profile. Label the bottom of stone leaching galleys elevation, both plan and profile. Label catch spaces while it control units and drain manholes with numbers. And he preferred that, I would prefer the proposed infill system be shifted to the west. All the drainage enter one water quality unit. And at the first drainage manhole at station two plus thirty-five, should have an approximate drop of, two foot drop for the inlet out to maintain sufficient cover. And utility pole at the entrance should be relocated away from the current, by two feet. Six, right. Edit notes to sheet five, they're applicable. And next one is in drainage table, adjust inverter out for drainage manhole one. Also note the wear elevations for the OCS one. General construction sequence note, change from, from stormwater basin to infiltration. Change crossway slopes. And it starts into bunches when they're all mostly Towels. I'll go quickly, nine, he wants to change the details for the catch basin and drain manhole. Use odd details. You gotta give a kind of Wapo sign detail and a private way sign. Provide a detail for twenty inch cleanout and leaching galleys. Provide detail for the OCS. Wear on typical infiltration system, certain elevations, brown wall, bottom of stone, bottom chamber, et cetera. Eliminate the note on the manifold or if it's gonna be used, provide a detail for it. Elevation, pipe size, and other that should be shown. Ten and ten. This appears to meet all our requirements with no waivers required. Note just above the seal, this plan provides to show the proposed subdivision could be done without waivers and so on. He's got the pre and post development counts. And this plan should be in the final version of the report. Stormwater report is good, demonstrates compliance. Test pits need to be performed to verify the soil type and depth of groundwater. This may be waived, the designers may add to supply soil log for previous testing. Information with the report showing the plans. Top of stone, leaching galleys. The post construction operations maintenance needs to be added to reflect the stormwater system. Will be jointly maintained with lot one. And he remains available. And as, walk speed, you can find it. Now, this is the most interesting one, Phil.
Well, I guess.
You know what one it is?
What the hell?
Yeah. Never seen this one before. Board of Health, you voted unanimously that they do not support the build of subdivision due to the impact that construction could have on wetlands. Okay? So?
We'll go see him.
Hey, that's, my view is, not being attorney, but they gotta give the approval, but they're not, this is going outside their.
I agree.
Sandbox.
It is.
You know? I guess, not publicly, but you gotta have your own opinion. If you wanna have your own opinion, and they don't like it, that's fine. I think they've gotta stick to it, but that's kinda gonna coincide with what you wanna do here.
Right.
So.
I, they don't, in my opinion, have any jurisdiction over what's, that's a whole different board.
Yeah, he, all they're doing is saying they, they don't like building wetlands. But if you're not building wetlands, but hey, it's, they, it says they do not support.
That is.
That you get paid for, all right?
Yeah, I guess I will, I mean, I, uh.
If we had less words in single's language, you guys would be out of business.
Dress up, Phil? Sure, me too, but, I mean, for the record, Scott Henderson, the project civil engineer, first.
Oh, you stand at the microphone, please?
Yeah, first off, apologies for, I was triple booked tonight. I was in the parking lot finishing the hearing, so I apologize for wasting your time there for, Phil started the presentation. With regard to the wetland, you know, we have a waiver free plan on sheet ten. And that shows work, some grading, a little bit of pavement right up to the edge of the wetland. In total, that would require altering about just under two thousand square feet of wetland area where the regulations allow five thousand. So, uh, there is a precedent allowed for when you need to do some work into a wetland and you provide mitigation by, um, restoring another area that's upland adjacent to this wetland at a two to one ratio. So you alter two thousand square feet, create four thousand feet. We're doing that right down the street on the other side of this property, on the other side of this property. So it is something the Conservation Commission has allowed in the past. And then the, the plan that we're presenting with waivers has a significant reduction in the amount of proposed work up against that wetland area. You'd be working really only within thirty-ish feet, uh, of that wetland line with the edge of that roadway hammerhead that we show. And then some grading down to meet existing grade, which you would wind up planting that anyway. So it would be a buffer zone to be vegetated. So, from a wetland impact perspective, though we'd have to go to the Conservation Commission to do that, the plan with waivers, um, doesn't include any alteration of wetland area and some work in the buffer zone, which is very frequently permissible.
Okay. So, um, I know one thing the Conservation doesn't wanna do, two plans. Meaning, say if the one way to go down, you can't do it, but you can still do conventional. They, they don't, they only wanna do, they see the waiver plan and that's what they're gonna do. It's like, um, you probably don't wanna do the non-waiver plan anyway.
We do not.
Yeah, okay.
So I would, I'd actually say we complied with, uh, his favor, I guess, or however, whatever it comes to, or how.
So, um, I, we've got a lot from them on lights and stuff, nothing ever to fit, nothing says no. And this one doesn't, they just don't like it, so. But in this particular one, because you're building next to it, you might, you don't have to go see them. And explain before we can ever close this down, right?
Yep.
One with that, have any idea you could?
I honestly don't know. But presumably, simply to make your fourteen day rule, we can't be here inside of a month anyways. So hopefully, uh, two meetings. So we should be able to have seen that before we go back to see you.
Okay, now the, I know, we'll have, we'll have comments too. Was there anything on Towel's letter that was issued?
No. The majority of his comments were omissions of information on the first of the plans and some updates. Soil testing that he mentioned, we're not gonna request a waiver, we're planning to do that next Tuesday. We're gonna do a couple of test pits. We do have some historical data in that area, but we're just gonna do it to bundle things up, so. Short answers, no, no issue with that.
So the chance that we spend plans for us will be, unless we have something major there, right? We don't need to, other than cleaning them up?
Yeah, it's mostly, um, you know, housekeeping on those and updates, so next week we can have it done.
I'll start with John. Can you tell me what the slope of the road is in the empty way?
So the, the slope is, uh, three point five percent, just under that.
Just looks bigger than that.
Yeah, right, well, that, so the profile is exaggerated in the vertical, so it looks very steep, so. It's effectively the same slope as the existing five, so.
And, concerning lot one. I know, here, uh, I see, total uplands. And it's only got continuous of twenty-six, seven. So it does not have sufficient continuous uplands right now to justify putting a house there?
It does. So it's required for sixty percent, so sixty percent of the forty thousand. It's twenty-four, and this initial, uh, up in the pocket here, it's just over twenty-seven thousand square feet. So both lots comply fully with all underlying zoning requirements, frontage area, continuous upland.
So you could build a house there once you get conservation's okay or whatever?
Yeah, the other permits would be conservation, uh, and septic system, so more help.
So the idea that it's in the future is, it could be a very soon future, potentially?
It's encumbered heavily. I won't say that it's undevelopable, um, but it's, it's a challenge, mostly the septic system. Regulations require a field one hundred twenty-five feet from the wetland. It's a little regulation. So there's a very limited area. That, that said, there, there are provisions in Title V. You can place a leaching field on a budding property with the variance, which has been issued before. I've successfully done that, and there's a significant area over here. That said, that makes the project at present financially, you know, infeasible, we'll say. So, I won't say it's an undevelopable lot, but it is a heavily encumbered parcel.
And apparently the fire department's okay with not expanding on. And apparently, the fire department's okay with not expanding on the entryway as long as lot one is undeveloped, okay? So they're happy. Can you give me an idea of where exactly on West Street this is? It's somewhere before you get to that cross street.
Top of there. Top of there.
Yeah, well, see, where up here is the...
That's where it's, right. Maple field down there.
Yeah, here, yeah, Mike Fabbler property. Um, yeah, Rusato's on the side, uh, West Pine Drive, if you remember where that is?
Yeah.
It's right here, so the entrance is maybe a hundred fifty yards from West Pine Drive. The line lines cut through.
Where is that cut through with the cemetery or whatever, uh?
Cemetery, the ones on Lincoln.
What's that, the one between Lincoln and West?
That's way ahead, so Rusato goes Rusato, and then you have, um, that's Kingsbury or something?
Kingsbury, yeah.
Yeah.
The Kingsbury is down off the map this way?
Up here.
Oh, it's that way?
Yeah, and then West, uh, West Pine's down here.
Oh, okay, so it's down for that one?
Yeah, that's Rusato, Kingsbury is up here, so it's right on the side.
Um, I don't think I have any questions at this time.
There's no sewer up there, right?
No.
No where up there?
Nowhere up there, no.
If there were sewer, would it be a slam dunk?
Sewer's easier, yeah. I don't see best entire areas, there's all the sand and well, all right, so you'd have, if you have sewer, you have to have water too, so it's not like they just run sanitary lines. You also got two railroad crossings, railroad crossings, there's a lot going on, so.
Um, I thought everything was very clear and clean, spelled out well, so I don't have any questions.
Phil?
I just have a question, one question. Um, the, um, the, wait one second here, the application form, so, so in the application where you give the, the total area of the project, so you're only doing it for the, the street, you're not giving the whole, all of the parcels, one and two, for the total?
I don't recall exactly what I've gone there, but that...
Yeah, so it, it just has down twenty, twenty-two thousand feet for the, for the, for the road?
Yeah, that, that's just the right of way then. Yeah, I kinda excluded the other lot, because we're not doing any substantive work in any of the private parcels, some minor grading in the edges, but...
One, one reason for asking, because we don't therefore have the woodlands, you know, upland, uh, wetlands, you know, the square, you know, the square footage. I think we normally ask for that in our...
Yeah, I, I can provide that in a written form, it is on the plan.
It is on the plan, yeah.
But I can, you know, that's fair.
And then, um, so it looked to me, when I looked on the map, that, right, that you're, some of the land, I gotta dash, or what parcel, it would be parcel two, might just cut across area three, water area three, but maybe, maybe, you know, it was, I was just reading the, the large map, and it'd be hard to see where, exactly where that line was.
Oh, the, this one, the locus map?
Yes. Yeah, when I compared that to the wa, our water resource overlay district.
So I, this, this base map is the GIS.
Yeah.
It's just, it's inaccurate, it doesn't have, and really, I probably should just omit this and draw in the correct property lines. This access corridor that will become a road or a port, that's how it exists.
So it doesn't really cut through?
No, it doesn't cut through, it's just that that was an update, so.
Just wanna clarify that, yeah. And, um, and then just, so, so if, what you're really asking us to do is to, to approve all the waivers, even though, you know, for, even though you know, you know, you're not intending to vote anything, just to get the subdivision approved with, with both waivers, that's really what you're asking for?
Right. We need to, to vote probably poorly, Jack, from all of it, we need an approved subdivision.
Yeah.
The majority of the discussion will be, do you grant the waivers? Hopefully we say yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, Sarah?
Yeah, okay. So, um, the road is, looks to me as it's going over the property at nine fifty-three West, so do you, I mean, I, I see it's existing, the, the driveway, yeah. So do, do you have an easement to use that?
So that is actually our property.
Okay.
Right, so right now, the way this was left, um, you know, everything that's dashed here, we have the two lots and the roadway.
Uh-huh.
Uh, this is how this currently exists. So, if somebody at some point in history foresaw that there'd be an opportunity to put up a right of way here, so these return radii to West Street, uh, and this entire corridor up until this point exists like this right now. So the only new property line that we're creating is from this point here, creating a reverse curve, the cul-de-sac down and back around and reconnecting here. These lines already exist.
Okay.
GIS just doesn't have that. The record plan, which you could provide, you know, and the existing conditions plan shows that, that line work, that's...
Was that done when you did the A and R, or?
No, that's, that was done when the lot was first created. I can't say when that happened, but it was a long time ago.
Okay, yeah, I would like to see that. I mean, according to our, you know, assessor's database, there's, there's no, there's no piece, yes.
Yeah, exactly, so, um, I could have a survey or provide those record plans, we can submit them, just for your review.
Uh-huh.
Um, but if you look at this sheet, it shows these property lines here, this is how everything currently exists. So there's either a conveyance, or this is how it's part of the plan, it's part of the plan.
Okay, I mean, I...
That's not new for me.
I wasn't sure if that was wishful thinking, or, yeah?
No, no, it's a fair, it's a fair question, because it's gonna coincide with the GIS, so.
Okay, um, and so you have the, the full length of what would be required for a non-waivered road?
Correct. Forty-six feet in width, thirty-foot radii returns to West Street.
Okay, okay, um, that's good. Um, and you, you did mention, um, Phil and A and R, do you know approximately when that was done, like when that, the, I don't know, the left side was separated by, from these two lots?
Well, it was ordered last week. Um, it was signed by this board about eighteen months ago.
And with the, the name Freiberger as the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, so my dilemma is, uh, you're asking for two-lot subdivision, and so you're saying there's two lots, but then you're asking for the waiver, 'cause you're saying there's only one lot, basically. Well, that, that the other lot probably won't be developed, so...
There's nothing that requires it to be buildable. You have an opinion from town council that says, all I've gotta do is provide area and frontage. It could be a two-foot wide strip for forty thousand feet, or whatever it turns out to be, if not, up on the map.
Yeah.
Um, so, the fact that we don't wanna build this is completely irrelevant. I just have to get to...
So our town council has said...
Your town council?
Yeah.
It's, I hate to use the name, but Judy Cutler put this in, in writing, um, decades ago.
Uh-huh.
You actually gave me the letter, Jack.
Wait, was this...
For Cesario.
Really?
Oh, yeah, well, it's true. I'm thinking back, the father's here up on the hill, when, when we had issues on A and R's, where they could come off of Plinton Street or up to... All right, all right, that was the one?
Yes.
What did she end up doing? Oh, yeah, she retired as chief justice of the land court.
Yes, that, that term.
Um, okay, I'm gonna look at that, because I, it doesn't sit well with me unless, you know...
I mean, the worst you do is you tell him, he has to build all the improvements.
Yeah.
Whether he builds the other lot, I mean, it would be more expensive, but that's life.
Right.
Sarah, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
We voted it, so count the second, twenty twenty-one.
Uh, thank you.
A little more than eighteen months.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll look at it.
It's a packed notebook.
Okay, and then, so you haven't been to Concom about this development at all? You don't need to, and you're, you're not planning to only, you, you would only go there if you wanted to develop that, that lot one, basically?
Yes, and the waiver, is there? So if we were to make the improvements, so this plan here is a side-by-side, this is the existing condition, driveway, gravel area, wooded, darkest weather. Um, this is the waiver proposal, the handrail turnaround.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the hundred-foot buffer for that is down right here, so if we were to make those improvements, that would be a permit from conservation. But the idea is, if we don't make those improvements, that's only contingent upon trying to fill a lot one, and we leave things the way they are, then we make no changes, we don't need anything else to do.
Yeah. Um, okay, so I just, I personally just am gonna do a little bit more research on...
Sure.
The town council's opinion.
We'll get you the deeds, um, property description for the front.
Okay.
That's not a problem. Um, I probably have a copy of Judy's letter somewhere, too.
If, if you have it, I'd like to see it, yeah, yeah, thank you.
My turn. Um, when I looked at the plan today, were, was this, what? Oh, no, Phil, I want. I go boom, boom, skip.
Sorry.
I didn't hear Phil complain.
I'm sorry.
I gotta bring my gun. Um, we're gonna plan, everything looked in order, it's, it's, when I first looked at the plan, I go, hmm, but I know why, because, what's the old saying? Familiarity breeds contempt? Yes, so when you have an out-of-town engineer, he does everything. That's what I've seen over the past umpteen years here. Guy from out of town, really pays attention. Hi, guys. Mmm. I won't name names, one just left, but anyway, so, no, they do do, they do go through the book, 'cause they have to, because they don't understand. Um, it was all clear what you wanna do, and now, like you said, the big, big showstopper right now, what you're gonna have to do with water health.
Right.
Now, my understanding is, we, we prove it, that's fine, if you never seek a, I'm not even sure if you seek a Form F, does that trigger?
I think you would want to, I, Carol and I talked a little bit about this, I think you do want a Form F, because that keeps the subdivision all under common ownership. So you have two lots in the road, but you can't split up the ownership until such time.
Can't sell it till you're bonded, so.
And so I think, as protection from kinda what the fire department said, you would wanna put it under Form F, and if you ever did want to do something with lot one, then you would either have to bond or do all the road, do all the work, or however the...
I'm gonna spin another one into it, 'cause we're obviously, Washington Street is actually two houses going up there, hasn't been bonded under the Form F covenant, so...
We can't sell the second house. We can't sell either house, actually.
No, I understand that.
Yes.
But what I'm saying is, if you get to the Form F, you know, you could still seek a building permit, 'cause down the hall, it's...
Yes, I think you could.
But you don't have a road, and it's not bonded, and so on and so forth, so you could end up with a building.
So we could put something in the decision, say, that the building permit shall not issue until, and we agree to that.
Okay, because, because like up there, I don't know what they're gonna do, but they got the two under?
Yep.
And not saying anybody's gonna do it, but you can actually pull a permit, build a house, never split the lots up, and there's one.
Right, and sitting on nothing, and that's not helpful.
And then someone else, so that...
We would agree to a condition that says you can't.
Okay.
Um, and I would also go one step further, 'cause these lots are very large. A little surprised no one's asked yet anyways, but if you were to grant the waivers, I would say that one, an additional condition of approval would be that you can't further subdivide the properties. I, we can report this more elegantly, but nonetheless, it's a two-lot subdivision, and if they want to further subdivide, they have to come back for a modification, um, 'cause presumably you would want the standard of this to be elevated to serve additional houses.
Yeah, but more importantly, Phil, you couldn't get a third lot in there, because it was designed out.
That is true.
So you'd have to come back and start again.
Right.
So, I, I don't necessarily think you need that, and because it's, you both have been boarded on that, but, um, you got a little, uh, work to do with the board of health and, um...
And some homework is there.
Hmm?
And some homework is there.
Um, I don't see any issues. We'll get more feedback once you come back from the board of health.
Sure.
So, um, other than that, it's, it's the, the new, young generation of landscapers and contractors here, isn't it?
It is.
Just some guy across the street, I forget his name. Well, that's, Murphy, I believe. Okay, my God. All right, um, now, what do you think, Phil?
Um, Scott, you can have the plans for next week or the week after, week to be here, you're two meetings out.
Two meetings, what, yeah, second week in a row, not, not, oh, second, what was it, Kate?
March sixteenth.
Yeah, did we open them?
We have the zoning articles that night.
Okay, yeah, we have room at noon on that night.
Okay.
I was thinking April. Okay.
Extension.
Everybody, yes, we agreed, though.
In preparation. Hopefully you're selling it by the lottery.
Sixteen doesn't show.
All right, we have a...
Yes, I would, uh, ask for an extension up through and including, uh, March thirty-first, um, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, I'm, motion accept the applicant's extension up through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And what time on March?
All the zoning articles are at seven oh five, so...
We'll say seven twenty, in case they buzz through, if they do, which, so, we'll continue this March sixteenth at seven twenty. Thank you very much.
One question.
Sure.
The, uh, dividing line between the two lots doesn't actually follow the, uh, zoning districts exactly, is that to provide additional coverage for lot one, eight, two?
Yeah, I mean, it could change, I guess, there's really nothing, there's some apply area here, but it's really not consequential. It's only consequential at this point, so at that point, it would just be extra line work to coincide directly with the zoning district.
Yeah, I didn't know.
And surveys don't like along the lines.
Okay, no doubt.
But you know, we're...
Jim, before you close, if the green cars were...
He's got all set?
You're all set, yep. March sixteenth.
We got those in.
That was a continuation.
Yeah, not to continue the hearing, but a quick question, you, nothing to do with us. Did the county ever give a, uh, variance for septic on number lot?
Yes.
They have?
Really?
Oh, they did, okay.
Yep.
Because the last one I remember was, we did, I think it was the father on Nosh Street, and they did it, and the next, and then next thing I know, your father told me they'll allow them.
They don't like it. Um, I don't, I suspect if that house wasn't already in existence, it was, again, it was something that only lines on the maps and plans changed, nothing in the ground did, so I suspect if they hadn't already had it in.
Yeah, it was funny how that whole house got there.
The neighbors' septic system was on someone else's property.
Just ask, I'll tell you.
Oh, I...
You know how it got there.
I do.
Yeah, we all, the...
That was fairly amazing.
The, yeah, I just didn't, the, I knew they'd change that. You also said something about a hundred twenty-five feet wetlands?
Yeah, there's a local provision in the...
What's the state standard?
Uh, a hundred feet.
Oh, so it's only twenty-five, okay.
Yeah, it's marked with a difference.
All right, I was just curious, I know, you know, about the septic, so, good luck, guys, with your help.
I'll be on time, relax.
It's fine.
No problem.
Thank you.
That being said, nothing else, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are done.
See you.